Good evening and welcome to the November tenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katy Dorset Council chambers. And let the record reflect that all members are in attendance except for Mayor Vaughn and Councilmember Pender and Dr. Wells who are on Zoom. We will begin the meeting with a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Hoffman, would you give us the honor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please silence any and all electronic devices, and if you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the chambers. The city of Greensboro strongly encourages residents' input at our meetings. It is the goal of the city council that the Katy Dorset Council Chamber is a welcoming and safe space for all community members. In order to speak at tonight's meeting, you must sign up to speak by six P. M., and if you signed up to speak online, you must let the courier know that you are in attendance. Speakers may address specific consent or business items with three minutes allocated for their remarks. Speakers cannot relinquish their time to others, and the speaker's order is determined by the presiding officer depending on the number of speakers. Council may adjust the time allotted for each person. Any handouts must be given to the courier for distribution. All speakers are expected to adhere to the rules of decorum. Any inappropriate or disruptive behavior will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Removal would result in a three-month suspension from in-person participation. A second violation following the initial suspension will result in a six-month suspension. A third violation or any instance involving physical altercations will lead to a twelve month suspension and may also result in criminal charges. Individuals who are suspended will still have the option to participate virtually via Zoom, ensuring their right to free speech is preserved. Zoom participants may not speak until they are called upon. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest, or if they serve on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city. All votes will be moved and seconded, and the presiding officer will announce the vote total. We have a consent agenda for items G. one through G. thirteen, which are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one single vote to expedite what is believed to be routine and non-controversial. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due either to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the next business meeting agenda. Our meeting includes closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around seven thirty P. M. Council has been requested to postpone item one, I. point one. It is an ordinance amending Chapter eleven, Article two, Division three, Sections eleven forty-eight, eleven through forty-eight of the Greensboro Code of Ordinances with respect to the powers and duties of the Minimum Housing Standards Commission to the November eighteenth City Council meeting. I will need a motion. Moved by Mr. Holston.
Seconded.
By Tammy Thurm. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and do we have any of our council people on Zoom? Jamila, your vote?
Aye.
Aye, is anyone, is Dr. Wells on or Mayor Vaughn? Okay, thank you. This is the time for ceremonial and presentational items. Item E. one, resolution renaming the Barbara Park Event Center to the Yvonne J. Johnson Event Center. Councilmember Hoffman, would you like to start us off, please?
Yes, Mayor, happy to. Resolution in support of the naming of Barbara Park Event Center after Yvonne J. Johnson. Whereas on December fourth, twenty twenty four, the city of Greensboro and the state of North Carolina lost a beloved community leader and activist with the passing of the former Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Yvonne J. Johnson. Whereas, a native of Greensboro, Yvonne J. Johnson dedicated approximately thirty years to the Greensboro City Council, serving as council member, mayor, and mayor pro tem, and making history as the city's first African-American mayor.
Whereas among her numerous accomplishments, she founded the Greensboro Drifters Incorporated, a local chapter of a nationwide sisterhood of strength, service, and sisterly love committed to providing scholarships that opened doors of opportunity for youth, extending care and support to seniors, and advancing voter education and registration to empower our communities. One step further was she served as a workshop facilitator focusing on topics of diversity and racism, and was promoted to executive director, a position she held for nearly forty years, and was a founding participant of the Summit House, a residential alternative to prison program for mothers convicted of nonviolent crimes and their minor children.
Whereas Yvonne J. Johnson served on or participated in multiple boards and commissions, such as the Commission on the Status of Women, the Black Child Development Institute, the Sherri Denise Jackson Foundation, and as the first president and president emeritus of the Women's Resource Center Board, the Bennett College Board of Trustees, the Justice Fellowship Task Force, the Young Women's Christian Association, YWCA, the Greensboro Cerebral Policy School, the Greensboro Child Advocacy Board, was a member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, was the first African-American to join the Junior League, and initiated a historical marker being placed at LeBauer Park to recognize the first site of the YWCA in Greensboro, which became the first organization to practice integration in the nineteen fifties.
Whereas, being recognized as a phenomenal leader and servant by and for women, Yvonne J. Johnson received numerous awards, honors, and recognitions, such as the Girl Scouts of America African-American Wing Scout, Women of Distinction Award, the Greensboro Commission on the Status of Women Achievement Award, Bennett College Women of Substance Award, the Bennett College National Alumni Achievement Award, African-American Atelier, African-American Woman of Distinction, and received the highest and most distinguished honor by Governor Roy Cooper with the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award. Whereas, the North Carolina League of Municipalities recognized the life and service of Yvonne J. Johnson through an official resolution adopted in May twenty twenty five honoring her decades of dedication to the city of Greensboro and her lasting impact on municipal government and civic engagement.
Whereas, Yvonne J. Johnson, a dedicated public servant, leading with courage, passion, and conviction known as the mother of Greensboro, served as a role model as one of the city's staunchest champions working with countless groups, individuals, and organizations.
And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that the Greensboro City Council wishes to support the naming of the Barbara Park Event Center as the Yvonne J. Johnson Event Center to honor her life and her commitment to our community, that a plaque bearing the name Yvonne J. Johnson Event Center be placed in a prominent location within the event center, that a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of the late Yvonne J. Johnson as a symbol of the gratitude of the people of Greensboro for her devoted support and contributions to our community. I need a motion. All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, that is improperly motioned and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Going to go on the building, so I would think Yvonne would appreciate a countdown, and if someone can help to unveil? This is it. Or at least, I don't know if I can, Lisa. Yeah, hold that for me. So we have a rep, a smaller version for the family to take home, and then we will unveil this with the Yvonne Johnson. Five, four, three, two, one. Oops. Is it going to come off? There we go. There we go. And we also have one here for the family. But we're not done. We're not done. You know, Yvonne, we are not done. So let someone take this. Lisa, would you like to hold this? So we can step back here, and this is a replica of the bronze plaque that is going to go inside the building, and somebody's going to help me. There we go. All right. You know, Yvonne, five, four, three, two, one. Vernon? Lisa? So basically, it's what we read in the resolution, and now I'd like to turn it over to the family if they would like to say a few remarks, because we all loved your mom. We all did. So thank you.
I would just like to thank the community and the council for loving my mother so much that you bestowed this honor upon her. Barbara Park is a community facility. It reaches out to the entire community, and that's what she was all about. So I know she's smiling right now, knowing that her name is going to go on this event center, and she's really smiling about that bus that drives around the city. But I want to thank all the council members. Thank you so much for this honor.
And I would also like to echo what Vernon said, but also, I really do appreciate each and every one of those on the council who took the time to find the appropriate thing to name for my mom, because you know she did not want a street. Really, before she passed away, about three weeks before, she told me, she said, "I don't want a street. I don't want anybody driving on me." And so, and so, well, y'all know her personality. So this is very befitting, because she was very proud of the honoring within that event center of women, and I believe that this speaks volumes about her body of work. So thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. And for, I mean, this family is just amazing, and I want to acknowledge there are so many people in the room who are here in order to hear all of this, and I know her best friend and many drifters are here as well, so, you know, it's just, it's just, we just wanted to do something that would live on and show her legacy. So thank you all so much for sharing her with us, for sharing her with us. We're going to put this close to here, too, so they can get some photos if you all, if you would like. Is that acceptable? Okay. I need some help moving the pages, please. All right, moving on to item E. two, resolution recognizing the Carolina Cowboys crowned twenty twenty five professional bull riding team's world champions. Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. You know, that was a very powerful presentation just earlier with Yvonne Johnson. It's really tough to even come after that, but we are going to talk about the resolution recognizing the Carolina Cowboys the twenty twenty five professional bull rider world champions. Whereas the Carolina Cowboys, based in Greensboro, North Carolina, proudly represent the Carolinas as a founding team of the professional bull riders PBR Camping World Team Series. Whereas since its launch in twenty twenty two, the PBR Team Series has brought new energy and excitement to professional bull riding, expanding the sport's reach and popularity. Whereas the Carolina Cowboys, under the leadership of head coach and PBR co-founder Jerome Davis, general manager, and twenty eighteen Daytona five hundred champion Austin Dillon, and co-owner and NASCAR Hall of Famer Richard Childress, have demonstrated exceptional dedication, teamwork, and community spirit both in and out of the arena. Whereas in twenty twenty five, the Carolina Cowboys captured the PBR World Championship, showcasing their dominance in the sport through consistent performance, strategic leadership, and unwavering determination of their riders and support staff. Whereas the team's annual home stand Cowboy Days, held at the First Horizon Coliseum, has become one of the most anticipated events of the PBR Team Series, drawing thousands of fans, generating national attention, and bringing a positive economic and cultural impact to the city of Greensboro. Whereas the Carolina Cowboys championship season symbolizes not only their excellence in professional bull riding, but also their commitment to representing the values of hard work, courage, and community pride that define the Carolinas. Whereas their success further enhances Greensboro's reputation as a premier destination for major sporting events and entertainment, highlighting the city's role in advancing the growth and visibility of professional bull riding in the southeast, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that the Greensboro City Council does hereby recognize and congratulate the Carolina Cowboys for their remarkable twenty twenty five PBR World Championship victory and their outstanding contributions to the sport of professional bull riding, and that a copy of this resolution shall be presented to the Carolina Cowboys in appreciation of their achievements and in celebration of their championship legacy, adopted this tenth day of November twenty twenty five. Congratulations, Carolina Cowboys.
I need a motion. I need a motion.
So moved. So moved.
Moved by Mr. Holston, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. All in favor, please say aye. All right, that passes unanimously.
We, us with the Carolina Cowboys, we just want to thank you guys for just, I can remember Ms. Johnson wearing her cowboy hat and hooking us with open arms. You guys are awesome, and we just love Greensboro, and we were so close last year to bring the buckle back to Greensboro. We were second place, and this year, the guys just put it all on the line, and we was able to come home as the two thousand twenty five world champions, and the buckle may still have a little champagne on it for when we celebrated a little bit, but we just thank you guys, and just thanks, we love Greensboro, and I hope Carolina Days will be a lot bigger this year. Thanks, you guys.
Absolutely. This is Jerome Davis and his wife, Tiffany Davis, and also the general manager, John Tumay. And we're really excited about these Carolina Cowboys, because they have brought a national championship. A lot of times, we're so accustomed, you know, to the Dodgers and the big parade, or the Eagles, well, this is, this is a part of Greensboro. They are national champions, and we're going to celebrate with them throughout the year, This buckle much like you've seen with the Stanley Cup in hockey, that teams have the opportunity, or players have the opportunity, to take it around to different venues. Well, because this is an annual national championship, we'll be taking the buckle around the city. You may see it at the gargles game, you may see it at the Christmas parade, the tree lighting ceremony, we're going to take this buckle everywhere.
Our Cowboys, who mostly live in Texas and Wyoming, Montana, and everywhere else, they're actually Brazil, are flying back to North Carolina to be in the Christmas parade and at the tree lighting. That's how much Greensboro, y'all's support means to our guys. We really appreciate, and Ms. Johnson's family, we do want to recognize, because she was a big supporter when we first started bringing this thing. So thank, thank you. We appreciate her, too. But thank all of Greensboro for your support that you always give us.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you so very much.
All right, moving on to item E. three, resolution honoring the life and legacy of Murphy Anderson. I will be reading this resolution. I do want to recognize former deputy city manager Chris Wilson is in the audience, and I know that several people are in the audience. Murphy Anderson was an artist who, well, you're going to hear about it in the resolution, so we'll, I'll save it for that. So, resolution honoring the life and legacy of Murphy Anderson. Whereas since the passing of Mr. Murphy Anderson on October twenty second, twenty fifteen, in Somerset, New Jersey, the city of Greensboro continues to honor his legacy and his lasting impact on art, culture, and his hometown. Whereas Murphy C. Anderson, Jr., born on July ninth, nineteen twenty six, in Asheville, North Carolina, and raised in Greensboro, North Carolina, developed a passion for art at an early age and went on to become one of the most influential, respected illustrators and inkers in the history of American comic books. Whereas after graduating from high school in nineteen forty three, Anderson breathily attended the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill before courageously following his artistic ambitions to New York City. He began his career in the comic book industry as a staff artist for Fiction House and earned his first published credit in Wings Comics in nineteen forty four. Whereas from nineteen forty four to nineteen forty five, Mr. Anderson honorably served his country in the United States Navy while continuing to contribute artwork to comic books and science fiction publications. Whereas through the late nineteen forties and fifties, Mr. Anderson built a prolific career illustrating works such as Buck Rogers. He contributed to notable publishers including DC Comics, Ziff Davis, Saint John Publications, Pines Comics, and Atlas Comics. Whereas Mr. Murphy Anderson became renowned for his work with DC Comics, he helped shape iconic characters and series, including Hoffmann, Captain Comet, The Spectre, Zatanna, and Adam Strange, and he co-created the beloved Atomic Knights feature, which he later described as his favorite project. Whereas during the silver and bronze age of comics, Mr. Anderson's elegant artistic style collaborated with penciller Kurt Swan, and together, they defined the visual identity of Superman and action comics, and they then earned the duo the affectionate name Swanderson among fans. Whereas Mr. Anderson's innovations extended beyond illustration, and in the nineteen sixties, he proposed a new comic page size of ten by fifteen inches, which is now widely adopted as the industry standard. In nineteen seventy three, he founded Murphy Anderson Visual Concepts, providing professional lettering and color separations for comic publications. Whereas in addition to commercial work, he contributed for many years to P. S. Magazine, the U. S. Army's preventing maintenance publication, making complex military information accessible through visual storytelling. Whereas over a career spanning more than five decades, Mr. Murphy Anderson became widely recognized as one of the premier inkers and illustrators of his time, and he left an indelible legacy in the world of comics, fantasy art, and American popular culture. Whereas as a native son of Greensboro, Mr. Murphy Anderson brought honor to his hometown through his artistic excellence, service to his country, and lasting influence on generations of artists and storytellers. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greensboro that the City Council honors the life and artistic contributions of the late Murphy Anderson and expresses its deep appreciation for the pride he brought to his community, that in recognition of Mr. Murphy Anderson, a plaque will be installed at the Greensboro Cultural Arts Center to commemorate his legacy, adopted this the tenth day of November twenty twenty five, and I would like to move that motion. And that is seconded by Mr. Zach Matheny. All in favor, please say aye. And I would like for my CPA, who is Paul Scotts, who is a comic book person and superhero fan, to come down and accept this resolution. He and I have worked on this for about three years, so, so I would like for him to come down and accept the resolution. If he'd like to say anything, that would be great as well. And, and Chris Wilson, you're welcome, too. And, and Chris Wilson, you're welcome too.
Really, because I know you guys want to get out of here. I'm not taking much time, but I appreciate the approval. Uh, Murphy, uh, even though you've used the word prolific, he was very legendary. If you go to any comic book convention, the most valuable comics are the ones that have the best covers. His comics are the most valuable. His covers, Hawkman, Justice League Superman, uh, they're outstanding. He was the first artist to do muscle definition, like seratus, the abs, quad, stuff like that on the comic book pages. So, and when I found out, I didn't know he was from Greensboro. I just grew up, you know, collecting comics since the 60s. When I found out he was from Greensboro, I became a huge fan. Thank you very much for this approval.
Now, before we move on with the agenda, I know all of us would like to say something at the end of our meeting about our beloved Yvonne Johnson, and I'll open up the floor to council members if they would like to say anything at this moment.
Um, just wanted to say that, um, she certainly was very legendary, um, very, uh, woman in our community who meant a lot to so many people and it's a great, I'm glad we're able to honor her in this way. Um, when we go into Barbara Park, we'll see her name, but not only when we see her name, we'll remember the type of woman that she was. And she still continues to be a model for many citizens even today, even after her passing away. Um, she left such a momentous impact in this community, so she will be missed.
Thank you. You?
It, it is a very fitting, uh, naming of the facility at Barbara Park. Uh, the Yvonne Johnson that, that I know, that I knew was someone who always brought people together, someone who always found a way to connect one way or another, even if you disagree, she found a way to connect. Saw it here in this chamber, folks would come in upset and angry and, uh, Yvonne would look at them and say, baby, and give them some words of wisdom. And although they came in, um, unhappy, uh, they would leave with a smile on their face. Or you still may be disagreeing, but it was something that she had this innate ability. She did the very same thing with us, closed session. Uh, she might be the last person to speak, but everybody listened. And again, she brought the folks together and it's just appropriate that the naming of the Barbara Park Facility, a park where people come together to have a good time or to cook out or to go play tennis or whatever it may be, they're coming together and Yvonne Johnson will continue to do that with the naming of the Barbara Park Facility. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Matheny?
I wish I could actually tell some of the stories that, um, I really want to tell. Yvonne was one of the funniest human beings that had the biggest heart in the world. And I, I mean, I can remember when she was mayor and, uh, she asked me to support something that she wanted me to support and I'm like, Yvonne, I got that, that's no big deal, I like that. She said, well, never mind, I can't tell you. Um, no, I mean, you know, and it extends, being at the celebration of life last year and the, the speeches that were given by her grandkids, um, were some of the most amazing speeches I've ever seen in such a emotional state. And it, I think it says the quality of person that Yvonne was as a human, as a grandmother, as a mother. Um, and I don't think there's anything better you can say than what the kids and the family said, uh, on that day. And so, um, I miss my friend, uh, the, the city lost an amazing person, but knowing the quality of her children and her grandchildren, the city's going to be all right.
Mrs. Hopper?
You know, gosh, so many things that you could say about Yvonne. She, she was serious about so many things, but she, she, she didn't take herself seriously. She was just, um, you know, she was just a, a person whom, who connected with people, um, just, um, immediately. And, um, you know, we could say so many things about Yvonne. She affected so many lives and made a huge difference in the city and, uh, we are always better for having people like Yvonne Johnson who walked among us for a long time. So thank you very much.
All right, Mrs. Thurm.
You didn't warn us about this part.
I'm full of surprises.
Um, you know, Yvonne was one of the first people that really welcomed me to council. And she was also one of the first to tell me the first time, don't worry, baby, we got you. Um, you know, I remember one of the first times that I took comments from the floor personally. And her response to me and her support of me was, um, something I'll never forget. And we could disagree and we could talk about things and we could challenge each other. Um, but Yvonne never stopped being a mentor and a friend and a confidant and somebody that I always knew I could go to as a coun, as a fellow council member and as just a person. Um, and I've heard that from other council members and I've heard it from members of the community. Um, she was a special, special woman. She's greatly missed. Um, and I think I will keep the lessons she taught me with me forever.
So Ms. Pender, did you want to say anything? I know she's on Zoom and she's having trouble getting on screen, so I'm not sure.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Right, yes.
Yes, um, I too would concur with many of the sentiments, um, that were spoken, but just, it's just an honor to be able to dedicate the Barbara Park Events Center in her honor because again, her legacy will continue to live on. And I had an opportunity to cross paths with her several times and I'm just thankful that we have this opportunity to be able to do this and also thankful for being able to step in, um, and hopefully give her honor in this role that I've been able to step in. And so grateful for this opportunity that we were able to continue to allow her legacy to move on with this center. Um, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go last. Um, you know, we've all had those special times with Yvonne. I'll, uh, and we've got a lot of stories, don't, don't we Zach? Having been with her, um, not only when I was elected to council, but many years prior, you get to know Yvonne and she's just one of the special people, her family's special, everyone's special. Um, she's so excited about grandkids and great-grandkids and waiting for them to come along the way. But, but one little cute story I think was, you know, one time we rarely disagreed, but when we did, we, we kind of disagreed about something and, and she and I were on the opposite sides of a vote. And I'll never forget, she took me in the elevator while we were going down to our cars and she said, I'll love you tomorrow, but I just want you to go home and pray about that. And it was, it was just, she was just that special where, you know, she would love you no matter what and she would guide you and mentor you. And, and like I said, those times were so rare. Uh, she, she just had that kind of heart that, that you wanted to, um, you know, you, you wanted to be with her, you wanted to be around her, you wanted some of Yvonne Johnson to rub off on you. That's, that's the way I felt the whole way along. She just was an amazing woman and, you know, this is a very small way we can honor her legacy. So I know she's happy. She's happy. So thank you all for sharing her with us. Um, let's see, moving on to, uh, let's see, okay, it is time now. Oh, we've got one more. I'm sorry. Two more. Yes, we've got the proclamation rec, thank you, of November as Youth Hope Month. And I do have the honor of reading that. This is a proclamation. Whereas Youth Hope Month is a national observance dedicated to increasing awareness of runaway, homeless, and at-risk youth and the critical resources available to help them find safety, stability, and hope. And whereas each year, thousands of young people in our country experience homelessness, abuse, neglect, or crisis situations that put their health, safety, and futures at risk. And whereas Youth Focus, a Greensboro-based nonprofit organization, provides housing, counseling, and support to young people in crisis and helps them achieve safety, stability, and independence. And whereas through collaboration with community partners, Youth Focus and the City of Greensboro have been able to directly connect youth to lifesaving services, including reuniting victims of human trafficking and exploitation with their families. And whereas during Youth Hope Month, communities across the nation are encouraged to take action by illuminating landmarks in green, sharing information about youth safety programs, and reaffirming their commitment to protecting and empowering young people. And now the mayor has signed this. I, Nancy Vaughn, Mayor of the City of Greensboro, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Youth Hope Month in the City of Greensboro and encourage all residents to support the efforts of Youth Focus and other organizations working to ensure that every young person in our community has access to safety, compassion, and opportunity. Now, this is not a resolution, this is a proclamation. So if there's anyone from Youth Focus who could come down and receive this, yes.
Just want to thank the city for their support for, um, our Youth Focus programs and for being a, a partner, um, with the National Safe Place Program, the big yellow sign on fire stations and other city buildings. And, um, we're proud to do this work and support. Um, and thanks for Andrea, she's one of our board members and her support too. So thank you guys so much. I wanted to get a picture for Keith.
Oh, picture? Okay. All right, so, um, our last item on the E, on our resolutions, item E5, Resolution Honoring the 125th Anniversary of Greensboro Purchasing and Establishing the City's Water System from Greensboro Water Resources. Mrs. Hightower?
Thank you. Resolution honoring the 125th anniversary of Greensboro purch, purch, purchasing and establishing the city's water system from Greensboro Water Resources. Whereas on August 1, 1900, the Board of Aldermen for the City of Greensboro voted to purchase the waterworks that serve the city from Greensboro Water Resources for $87,500. Whereas this momentous decision was reported in the Greensboro Telegram on August 13, 1900. The paper regarded the matter as a splendid trade for the city of Greensboro. Whereas in the fall of 1888, the city observed the completion of an extensive system of waterworks of the combined stand pipe for water storage, standing 69 feet tall with a capacity of 100,000 gallons located in the vicinity of the railway depots near the intersection of South Elm and Fable Street. Whereas at that time, the city had about three miles of main pipe, 50 public, and three private fire hydrants, and an ample supply of water furnished for the manhole uses of the community. Whereas today, 125 years later, the Greensboro Water Resource Department and its 430-plus full-time employees maintains over 1,500 miles of waterline, 13,541 hydrants, over 11,000, 111,000 water meters, 11 water sta, storage tanks, and 13 water booster stations that serve over 300,000 residents. Whereas Water Resources is guided by a strategic plan and the efforts of exceptionally talented staff to serve the community by providing high-quality utility services and by demonstrating exceptional customer service and resource stewardship today and henceforth. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Greensboro that the City Council wishes to express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to former and current legislative and executive city government members and former and current city staff members of Greensboro's Water Resource Department for 125 years of dedicated service and to the community for its support and trust in this essential and vital public water system. That a copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the Director of Water Resources to be shared with the staff and the community as a symbol of gratitude and thanks for their trust and investment in the city of Greensboro. Adopted this the 10th day of November 2025. And Mr. Borchers will come forward.
Did you want to move the item, Mrs. Hightower?
Oh, yes.
Do I hear a second?
So move the item.
Seconded by Mr. Holston. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Temp, and members of council. I have just a real short presentation and then I do have a, um, an item that I'd like to share with each one of you as well as the family of Yvonne Johnson. So as, we can get it here. As, as you read in the resolution, 125 years, and that's a pretty good price, $87,500 compared to what we, we pay now for water and sewer. Uh, and as you saw too, the three miles of, of main, 50, are 50 public and three private fire hydrants and ample of supply for the city center itself. The stand pipe is pretty significant and I'll get to that in just a minute, but it's the first water storage tank in the city of Greensboro. And there is a picture of it, you see right there, uh, of the stand pipe that was built in around 1887 and completed in 1888. And as you had mentioned, it was located what was called Fayetteville Street, but now it's called Martin Luther King Jr., uh, street and it's east of South Elm Street, which you can see right there is where it was 100 and over 125 years ago. And if you look at, uh, to date, what are the, some of the major accomplishments, certainly from 2011, PTRWA is a great example, Piedmont Tribe Regional Water Authority, and the investment that this council and previous councils made. The TZ Osborne Waste Water Treatment Plant doing the upgrades, the nutrient upgrades to meet, uh, Jordan Lake, uh, requirements. Mitchell and Townsend Water Treatment Plant upgrades, including Lake Townsend Dam and the PFAS, the Forever Chemical Investigation. And that was certainly one of the items that was very important to, to Yvonne Johnson was the quality of our water, of course, and, uh, getting, removing these forever chemicals. Stormwater conveyance, flood mitigation, stream restoration, the Rand, Greens, Greensboro Randolph mega sites, the, uh, advanced metering infrastructure, which now we have smart meters for all of our customers so they can get near real-time data for all of their, uh, for the water that they use. The water sewer extension policy, which allows us to really focus on regionalization, which was a, certainly an important, uh, aspect or driver for this and other councils. Our strategic plan, uh, more than 3,000 miles of water and sewer lines and 53 lift stations. And I, I do want to just take a second and acknowledge, it's a team effort. It's certainly, I am very thankful, of course, for council and city manager's office for their leadership and support, but I'm extremely thankful to my, my team. And if, when I call up my team members, if you could please stand to, to be recognized, I would appreciate it. Assistant Director Christine Williams, Assistant Director Virginia Spillman, uh, Business Division Manager Amy Walker couldn't be here, but Customer Service Manager Mark Chester, and soon to be Customer Service Manager Melvina Worsley, uh, Engineering Division Manager Jana Stewart, Operations Division Manager Patrick Smith. Stewart, Operations Division Manager Patrick Smith, Stormwater Division Manager David Fleeger, Water Supply Division Manager Scott Jewell, and Water Reclamation Division Manager Elijah Williams. Thank you for your service. And the highlight of this is a little token of appreciation that I want to extend to the council members. Each of you, there is a box behind you. There's also, this is for the family of Yvonne Johnson. If I could have someone from Yvonne Johnson's family come up, please?
Is it a water meter, Mike?
This was created by a dear friend who is a very skilled potter in
Oh, my God.
Seagrove, North Carolina. And it's a replica of the first standpipe for the city of Greensboro. And it's on the bottom of it, it states that it's 125-year public utility, and it's signed by him. Matthew Kelly is the potter. So I would like to give this to the family. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, thank you. And before we move on to speakers from the floor, I just wanted to mention that Mayor Vaughn is watching. Her daughter had some surgery today, and she's okay, but she needed to be with her daughter, so she sends her well wishes to the Johnson family and everyone else in the room. So just wanted to give an update there.
Okay, I just wanted to thank Mr. Borchers before.
Sure.
I know he's stepping away. I wanted to thank him and his team. They are very conscientious working individuals in that department. And I know some things have been challenging lately, but they really do care about water quality in this community and that everyone is safe. And so when I tell you that he works day and night, he really does. No matter when you call, he will call you back.
He will.
And he has set this department up so that they also know the importance of serving this community. And I will tell you that it has been my pleasure to know Mr. Borchers and work with him and all his team members as well. But I really want to thank him. I don't do water, I'm not an engineer, but he can speak it and he lives it as well. And you can certainly tell that by their attitudes and their behavior in that department. And I think we can't thank them enough for really what they have done for this city. So thank you, Mr. Borchers.
You are correct.
Mike, I don't know what you did, but that doesn't happen very often.
And also, I want to say that you help explain things, and you and your staff both help explain things, so those of us who are not engineers, so we can understand it all. So thank you, thank you. All right, moving on to public comment period, now is the time for speakers from the floor on non-agenda items. And this is an opportunity to hear from anyone wishing to speak. And generally, this is a time of listening for council. The subjects will be noted that you bring up, and if it requires action or request, the city clerk or city manager will note as such and provide steps for any required response or after action. And please leave your contact details with the city clerk to facilitate communication. Our first speaker, Mr. Curtis Hairston. Is he in the room? Mr. Curtis Hairston. And then after that, I would like, if you can line up against the wall over on this side with the glass, Philip Marsh, Luther Falls, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce it, Naveh Hodge. If they are in the room, they can go to the opposite side of the room, please. All right, Mr. Hairston?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Yvonne, actually, Miss Yvonne was my cousin as well. God is great. I'm here to talk about homelessness in Atlanta, in Greensboro, North Carolina. It's still an issue of homelessness. I'm walking past males and females that's mentally disturbed, living underneath our bridges, where sewer is, right over here on Washington Street. I'm pretty sure there's some people lining up out here right now feeding the homeless people. I know there's money funded for, allocated for homeless, emergency homeless situations. Last year, these emergency warm shelters were not ran professionally in a few ways. You had, it wasn't, it wasn't clean. You know, it was unsanitary. And then you had a lot of people that were, I don't think was too close in practice together in one place. So let me say that. And also, the issue of fair housing, and these rundown landlords, or however we call it, you know, because if you have a place filled with roaches and the landlord still wants rent, I think that's unprofessional, for make for better words. And then let me say this, anytime you engaged in politics, there's always going to be some conflict, you know? And I'm a prophet of God as well, you know? So at the same time, I'm talking about fair housing, homelessness, and our local jobs or race retention on jobs, those type of issues that we don't want to talk about. We don't want to face the real issues, but we're going to have to face the real issues. I think race retention is real thick in Greensboro, North Carolina, and other places too, but I'm here. So I'm going to speak on the way I'm here. But we don't want to face that, but we're facing that. You know, and I don't understand how everybody could be so cool and so cool and nice and collective, and we got, well, Southern Street is a mess over there, you know? Oklahoma Hotel is a mess over there. And then we got people lining up out here that's homeless, and we say that we're doing great in Greensboro. I don't see Greensboro as doing great as a great city. I don't, I don't see that. You mean, we got the tiny houses, and then we throw all these homeless people over here and say, well, y'all go get your food how you get it. Then Trump won't take food stamps. So, well, the government, I ain't going to say Trump, the government. But yet, we're doing great. I don't see us doing great. So change is good, you know? Congratulations to all the new city council, the new mayor. Congratulations to all of you. God bless and have a good day.
Thank you. And if you, if you would make sure that the clerk over there has your information so someone can reach out? Thank you, Mr. Hairston. All right, Mr. Marsh?
Good evening. Congratulations to everyone that was re-elected in my sympathies with those who weren't. I want to just briefly come before you and make you aware, the Washington Street Bridge was closed, and due to that closure, we've re-entered the space that we were in last year. And so I have a document that has been given to you by the clerk, as well as entered into the official record. And I plan to follow up with staff this week with regards to that letter. But I just wanted to make you aware and hope that the new council members that are coming on, as well as those who have been here before, and went through what we went through last year, worked together with us on Washington Street to make sure that the issues that need to be addressed are kept in the forefront as we look for additional solutions to the Washington Street issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Falls?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro Temp, and members of the Greensboro City Council. Luther Falls Jr., Secretary of Marketing, Director of Washington Network Incorporated and Financial Network Insurance Group. And I too would like to congratulate the winners in the recent election, but I also want to thank you all for the service that you have provided for the city, and especially for my councilwoman, Councilwoman Hightower. I want to thank her so much, and on behalf of the citizens of District 1 in particular, for her outstanding service that she has rendered to us. And we have worked very closely together on many, many issues, and she's always been receptive and accessible and able to provide most of the time what we may need or refer, who may need to be referred to. And I have to say something about my queen. I called her affectionately, Dear Honorable Yvonne Johnson. And when I would call her, I would say, hello, my queen, and she really, really seemed to like that because she was everybody's queen, all of our queen. And I want to thank my colleague Phil Flash for making sure that I was able to be here for the commemoration of the park, the center of the park, which is right down the street from my father's house where I now reside. And it's just a wonderful thing to be able to see that happen, because she never won an honors or awards, she has all kinds of them. But we have shown a great tribute to her and the family, and we just want to wish all the new people coming on well. And my colleague, Mr. Holston there, he knows how I feel about him, and we're going to be working with the entire council as they go forward. Anything that I can ever do, you've heard me say that before, it's about the city of Greensboro. We love the city of Greensboro, and we're all one. We're all one, it's one Greensboro. And thank you again, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Falls. Ms. Hodge, and I'm so sorry, I didn't pronounce your first name correctly.
It's fine. Good evening, council members. My name is Naveh Hodge, and I'm a student at North Carolina A&amp;T. I may not be a permanent resident of Greensboro, but I walk your streets, study on your campuses, and share in your community, which happens here affects us all. Greensboro is standing in a moment of crisis, not just a crisis of safety, but a crisis of humanity. Too many people no longer feel safe in the city they call home. Too many young people walk with fear instead of with freedom. On October 6, 2025, UNC G Police were involved in a violent encounter with UNG student Alyssa Ria and her partner Quentin Thomas. What began as a calm incident turned into chaos. Alyssia ended up injured, handcuffed, and terrified on her own campus, the very place meant to protect her. That image should haunt every one of us, because no student should ever have to wonder if calling for help will end with harm. And this is not the first time. Another arrest by Greensboro Police has spread across the city, showing us again that the promise of safety does not feel the same for everyone. Some of us see a patch and feel relief, others see a badge embraced for survival. That is not justice, that is fear disguised as order. We cannot build a safe city on silence. We cannot preach unity while turning away from the pain, and we cannot tell our youth to believe in a system that refuses to believe in them. I am calling for real accountability and real reform, training that teaches officers to de-escalate, not dominate, transparency that tells the truth, not the version that protects power, and oversight that includes the people who live in the reality of these streets, not just those who patrol them, because public safety without public trust is an illusion. So tonight, I'm asking Greensboro to choose courage over comfort, justice over tradition, and truth over denial. Let this be a moment we stop managing pain and start demanding change. Let this be a moment we say that safety should never depend on your skin color, your zip code, or your student ID. And let this be a moment that transforms outrage into action. I believe in this city and I believe in this people, and I believe that when we come together, when we refuse to be silent, we can make history right here, starting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's see, is Robert Laramie here? No. How about Angela Bisecker? If she is here? Well, she's coming down. Then I have Marcus Chambers and Tara Cameron to line up. I did want to recognize several of the North Carolina A&amp;T State University and AAACP members. I know Jasmine Bastian right there. So thank you all for attending. We do love hearing from our youth, so thank you very much. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Angela Bisecker, and I'm a native of Greensboro. I graduated from UNC Greensboro and raised my family here. After becoming empty nesters, my husband and I moved downtown a couple of years ago. The following statements that I'm going to present are based on information found in public records from the city. With no public input, the city of Greensboro recently demolished the Bellmead parking deck. The demolition took place after the original engineering firm, Kimley Horn, and other independent engineering firms stated that the deck could remain in use with some remediation. The city never solicited any bids for the possible repairs. The city sold the property for $1.85 million. The city's appraisal of the property's fair market value was $2.42 million. That is a loss of $570,000. The city never solicited any other bids for the sale of the property. Greensboro taxpayers, including myself, paid for the $2.3 million demolition of the deck. Taxpayers also paid for the thousands of gallons of water that was used to reduce dust, and taxpayers are paying, now paying, for the sidewalk and road repairs related to the demolition area. Three small businesses closed, and over 740 downtown workers, tanger visitors, and visitors to the downtown parks lost convenient parking. I live next door to Bellmead, so this is all stuff I witnessed as well. Workers must now walk all the way to the back of the Lincoln Deck, located at Friendly and Green, to access the Lincoln Deck's only elevator. The tanger center has limited number of handicap spaces, and disabled tanger visitors are now forced to walk much farther down to the Marriott Deck. My questions are why the city did not request any repair bids so that a proper cost analysis could be completed before the demolition of this vital parking deck? Why did the city not request any sell bids in order to get the highest possible price for the property? And why would the city agree to cover the demolition costs and not sell the property as-is to save taxpayers over $2.3 million? The new owner does plan to use the property as a for-profit surface parking lot for up to five years per the contract. Also, while we are discussing downtown parking decks, in 2020, the city of Greensboro spent more than $78 million, $78 million constructing two parking decks intended to serve two hotels, the AC Marriott and the Westin. Five or almost six years later, neither hotel actually exists. One started as 20 levels, it's down to six, and has been stagnant for a few years. The other one technically broke ground, but there's been no progress. What measures are in place to hold developers accountable when projects are delayed indefinitely? But more importantly, it is worth considering how these millions of dollars in public funds over the past five or six years could have been allocated for affordable housing, infrastructure, public safety, and more in neighborhoods throughout the city of Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, could you give just a little bit of background on that? I do know that the deck was falling in from the top, is what I understand, that it was starting to deteriorate so badly.
Yeah, we actually, we provided counsel back then and the public as well, and we can provide some more tomorrow and to council in more follow-up. But it was significant, a significant issue, and the integrity on the inside of the deck. And even when we started the remediation, we found that the danger was actually even more significant. So I feel like we very much avoided what could be, what could have been a very serious situation. And also, you know, when you're looking at that, and the speaker alluded to a number of other things, but you know, where we landed with this and the return that we have expectation for in the coming years will be of significant use to the public of the city. And so we appreciate the concern in the comments, but there was a significant concern of danger for those that were parking in that deck.
And if you could get us information, make sure she gets as well, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Maseen?
Mr. Manager, you could also add that two of the businesses were relocated in downtown, and so there's a lot of follow-up on that that could be corrected. We've been working with Lily and her son to relocate the Dolce Roma Coffee Shop for a number of years, and I know that's in motion as well as Stitch. And so there's a lot more that...
Yes, sir, you're very right. And I wrote a note down, and actually, the businesses that had to be relocated actually factored into the timeline of what we were doing. We wanted to ensure that the city provided whatever assistance we could to those businesses that had to be either interrupted or relocated.
All right, thank you. And is Marcus Chambers here?
While that's coming up, Mr. Manager, I'd also reach out to Mr. Johnson with Oakview Group and the Tanger Center, because the Tanger Center actually added handicap parking along the side, so it's even actually closer for folks to ease into from a handicap parking standpoint.
Thank you. You're Ms. Cameron? Yes. And then after Ms. Cameron will be Mr. Brinson, Mr. Blackman, and Mr. Hicks.
Good evening and congrats to the new city council. My name is Tara.
I'm sorry, stop just a moment, we got some... Okay, okay. Was that your, that wasn't yours, was it?
My phone in the...
Oh, 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 gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Good evening and congrats to the new city council. My name is Tara Cameron. My heart is a little heavy speaking to you this evening. I stood here a few months... I stood here a few months ago and expressed the horrific acts of TB Hatch. I warned the previous city council, and on camera, they appeared moved and upset. Behind the scenes, no one replied to my emails or voicemails, and I got pushed through the cracks. Meanwhile, I'm still dealing with continued court cases for false charges. Now, here we are months later, and I hate to say I told you so. I reported Hatch. His bosses, like Sergeant Hollis and the Professional Standards Division, were supposed to reach back out within 48 hours. Instead, I was pushed through the cracks. Weeks later, I received a letter in the mail that they had found nothing wrong and closed the case. They never called or even asked my side. The city then put a lien on my car with outrageous charges at Bobby's Friendly tow-in, not so friendly, by the way, and refused me my stuff out of my car. By the way, my car should have never been towed. They also told me that it would be about $1,000 to get out. I recently found out that it was $560, but the charges continued to grow. I was told of different people to reach out to, but again, I slipped through the cracks. It took me months and money to even retrieve the rest of the items that hadn't been stolen by the people who worked there. Why is the city contracted with crooks? He refused my emergency services. He refused to call his supervisor when asked. My best friend and I had multiple bruises after he made me lay in the rain on the highway with my posterior out. The list goes on and on from that horrific night. Now, here we are, another victim. Where is the justice, and why is he still active duty? Why is Hatch untouchable and protected for doing wrong and breaking laws? What happens when there is no protection from the ones who are supposed to protect, serve, and provide unbiased judgment? I urge you not to let this type of behavior continue to go unrecognized. At this point, we have to stand for change on our own, because who else have we to rely on? The media paints this picture to protect the force and his family, who protected me and mine. He has a proven record of abuse, not just on the force, but in his personal life. Who is protecting them? He has been known to belittle rookies and bully them into not snitch, and sadly enough, they go unprotected for fear of isolation and job security. Officers like Hatch make it hard to trust and believe in a broken system, no matter who is trying to rebuild it. So I challenge you at minimum to consider these things and take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, or Ms. Harrow, someone will get back with her.
Yes, we will. There was an IA inquiry, and so she was notified about that, but I'll make further contact.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. Brinson, and then Mr. Gene Blackman, and then Mr. Hicks.
Good evening, Reverend CJ Brinson, longtime, lifetime member of the Greensboro community. Happy to be here with all of you. I'm simply here tonight, I don't have any notes, so like most creatures, I won't be before you long. But I'm here tonight to simply support the young people who came out tonight to speak about police accountability. Many of you already know that for about 90 days, we engaged the city council around policing accountability issues here in this city. I argue that had action had been taken place, perhaps we wouldn't be here again around another police accountability issue. Greensboro has a policing problem. It has had so for 60, 70 years, and here we are still fighting the same issues. And so tonight, I want to make sure that these young folks' voices don't go unheard. I want to ask that this council consider beginning to take action, not only around the demands that they have asked, but demands that have been previously made on the council regarding ending regulatory stops, safety frisk, as well as implementing written consent. And we also hear again that another officer is a repeat offender. What we said happens when you don't reprimand officers the first time. So I hope that we take these indictments serious on officers who are abusing power and begin to address them so that we can do a better job of protecting the citizens here in Greensboro. I want to also thank many of you who have served, but we are really looking forward as well to the new council forming taking its place in December. It's my hope that we continue to do this work and that we can advance the cause of policing accountability here in Greensboro. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. Mr. Hicks, and then we have Kadija Berry, Dennis White, and Tatiana James.
Good evening, council. Good to see you all. I'm going to also speak about police accountability. I think what happened to Mr. Williams should disturb everyone. According to reports, he was sitting in his car, and the police said they saw marijuana. Which is interesting to me, because moments later, that turned into a violent encounter between police and another black resident. But, you know, here's a problem, and it's a big problem, that we seem to not be able to get our heads around. The State Bureau of Investigations has addressed this. The SBI's own report says that hemp and marijuana are the same species. They look and smell identical. In their words, there is no way for an individual to tell the difference by sight and odor alone. That means when an officer says they saw marijuana, what they actually saw could have been a completely legal cannabis product. And those products are everywhere, all across Greensboro. In convenience stores, smoke shops, local markets, you can buy legal cannabis products that look and smell just like marijuana. And I know, because just yesterday, I bought this product myself from John's Curb Mart, which is owned by our future mayor and her husband, Mary Kay Abuziwa. So why is it that something that is legally eligible to be sold is illegal when sitting in a black man's lap? And if cannabis can make money for you, why should it cause harm for black residents? And cause harm and, you know, strip dignity and safety. So the SBI has warned us about this, that police can't tell the difference in the field. Their, the state SBI, their field, their lab cannot tell the difference. There's a memo, and I'll be happy to send it to all of you. So we really need to confront this hypocrisy. And until we admit that what's being criminalized is not the product, it's the race of a person, until we admit that, we're going to keep having to come back here. And I have to admit, for me, I'm ecstatic that six of you won't be here next month, because then, change can actually happen.
Thank you. Kadija Berry, Dennis White, and Tatiana James. And then I'll go back and make sure I didn't miss anyone.
Good evening. I was wondering if Tatiana James could go first, and then I would follow after her.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Tatiana James, and I currently serve as a junior community justice student attending North Carolina A and T State University. Also serve as the second vice president for the NAACP at North Carolina A and T. I echo my fellow community members in standing before you this evening to discuss an issue that has toppled our community for far too long, the excessive force exhibited by law enforcement officers. There is a clear, urgent necessity to revisit police training practices in specific regards to those who use excessive force when handling individuals who resist arrest. Both federal and state guidelines state that an officer is permitted to use excessive force when dealing with a non-compliant individual. However, the question comes, when is necessary force excessive, and quite frankly, cruel and unusual in direct violation of the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution? This argument came into question last Monday night when a man named Nathaniel Williams was subject to this said unnecessary and excessive force as a result of his resistance during an arrest carried out by the Greensboro Police Department. The questionable use of this force has circulated throughout social media, which has prompted our presence here today. Greensboro is a college town, and we are currently in a time where its college students do not feel safe or protected from those who are quite literally appointed to protect and serve them. Our demands are simple. We must clearly outline the use of excessive force in specific regards to those who resist arrest. I urge this council to commission a review of our current police training curriculum, consult with experts in community policing and behavioral health, and invest in programs that teach officers to prioritize prevention over punishment and safety over excessive force, according to the mission of the United States Department of Justice. Thank you for your commitment to safety and justice for all within the Greensbournes, North Carolina.
Thank you. Dennis? Tatiana?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kadija Berry. I am a third-year political science student attending the illustrious North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University. I stand here... I do, right. I stand here with the same clarity, urgency, and convention as my classmates regarding the incident that took place on November 3rd involving the Greensboro Police Department and Nathaniel Williams. Justice delayed is justice denied. Our call today is direct: release the body cam footage in full, conduct a transparent investigation, and hold officers responsible for use of excessive force and full accountability. And I want this to be clear. Urgency, the urgency here is not just about the incident, it's about a pattern. A pattern that tells us that what happened, what, excuse me. A pattern that tells us that what happened to Nathaniel is not an exception, but a product of a system that continues to cause harm. Tatiana James outlined beautifully the necessary steps to reform training. So I will end with this. Training cannot be a talking point. It must be a commitment, a measurable, enforced, and consistent standard to prevent harm before it happens. Because accountability after the fact is not enough. We need prevention, we need protection, we need change that's structural, not symbolic. So let this moment not be dismissed as another news cycle, another statement, another delay. We are calling for accountability. We are calling for a full, comprehensive revisit of police training standards in this city. We will not allow this moment to be ignored, dismissed, and we expect action. Thank you all.
Thank you. Dennis? Dennis White, and then is Tatiana here? Sure, she's booked. She's booked. Yeah, I got her ahead, I guess. Okay, go ahead.
Dennis White, Motley Church. In the past, when I've been here, I've engaged this moment from a position of comment. But after witnessing the video of a resident of this city who was already physically restrained by multiple officers have his head pounded upon repeatedly, I engaged this council and by proxy, the Greensboro Police Department from a position of curiosity. My curiosity this evening is what gives you the right? What gives you the right to behave this way? Is it the training that is either wholly effective or completely missing the mark? Effective in producing officers whose protocol for interacting with people leaves them predisposed to escalation rather than de-escalation? Or missing the mark of preparing officers to engage citizens strategically and humanely? What gives you the right? Is it the screening and hiring practices of the Greensboro Police Department being inept at identifying unconscious bias or pre-existing prejudice? What is the source of power? What is the motivation, the provocation, to cheat the trust of the public time and again by taking their presumptions of protection and their tax dollars and paying them back in brutality, unnecessary and overt use of force, all manner of negligent behavior, and unchecked abuse of power? My observation is that it is a culture of policing that has deep roots in this city's history that gives you the right. It is the habitual and perpetual failure of this city council and councils past to implement and enforce a police accountability apparatus that gives you the right. It is the blind eyes and deaf ears turned to the community's consistent petitions for fruit-producing dialogue and engagement around the issues of policing in this city in the context of a legitimate public safety concern rather than acrimonious and contemptuous complaints that gives you the right. And I apologize for the aimless implications in my language, because honestly, this city's shortcomings are an insult to our visually and hearing impaired community members who are adept at living with others peaceably. It is my observation that what gives you the right to continue to fail the public in this regard, among other things, is the continuation of the safety frisk, regulatory stops, and the absence of written consent to search. Therefore, is my observation that the most appropriate first step to a culture shift in this city's policing practices is to adopt a written consent policy for searches and regulatory stops for motorists and safety frisks, and listen to the community when they tell you how they desire to be policed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to everyone who spoke. I just want to make sure we haven't missed someone if they came in. Robert Laramie? And Marcus Chambers? Are they here? All right, that concludes our speakers from the floor.
Mary Kay, can I just ask one quick thing? I heard the speakers, but can you give me, Mr. City Manager, Ms. Attorney, the status of the body on camera? The chief was supposed to be requesting it.
Can you hear me? Yes. Yes, so we do have the petition ready. The chief has asked that we forward the petition to the Superior Court to petition for the release. Chief Thompson is out of town. He will not be back until Wednesday. Wednesday, he wants to see in person, look over it. If he approves the petition, we'll move it on to the Superior Court. Hopefully, it will be on the docket by next Monday, but that is completely up to the Superior Court calendar personnel. If he doesn't approve it, we'll revise it and we'll get it over as quickly as he can approve it. So he does, in fact, want it released. We're going to do the same thing, Madam Councilwoman, that we did the last time, and ask the judge to allow counsel to view first, likely in a closed session, and then shortly thereafter, within minutes of you all reviewing, it will be released to the public.
Has the family involved asked for...
The family, as far as I know, the family has not. I have behind me our police attorney, Joshua Bowers. I will let him speak to that if maybe they've come over to the headquarters. They have, no one, no attorney, and no family member has contacted my office, me, to ask if they could go over and see it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, but, so their actual attorney has, they don't have one. But if Mr. Williams, who's in it, and his representative, they can go actually see it as a man?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, they can go.
But they have not asked.
Right, they have not asked. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's just to confirm that there are two separate paths here. One is the one that the chief is taking on, which is through the court system, the release, and all that good stuff. But as Councilmember Hightower just shared, the second path is that the person who is involved in the incident, the very next day,
Yes.
can come down to GPD and file that request, and within short order, be able to actually view. This is totally separate from the court and the release.
Yes.
They can view that, if their face or their voice is in that video.
Correct. If your face or your voice is in a video, you can always come to the police department, alone or with your representative, and ask if you can, probably go back in one of the conference rooms or wherever they allow viewing, and view it. You cannot record, you cannot, you know, do anything else, but you can just view it. The other, that's called disclosure.
Disclosure.
The other form is called release, where even though he's the chief of police, because there is a criminal investigation attached, if he wants to release, we still have to get a signed order, signed by the Superior Court Judge, and that is pursuant to North Carolina general statutes.
Thank you.
All right, and, you know, Mr. Blackman, I apologize, I called you after, Ms. Tara Cameron, but there was applause going on, so you may not have heard me, so you can come on up. Are you good? I just wanted you to know that I did call you earlier. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda, unless anyone else has any comments. So Mrs. Hoffman has moved the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Thurm. We can vote on this one. Please vote. Yes, Mayor Vaughn, well, not, Ms. Pender. I think Mayor Vaughn is watching now.
Madam...
Yes? And she is a yes? I just want to wait and see the vote first.
I'm sorry, Mary Kay, Madam Pro-Tim.
It's okay.
Sorry, I have to get used to it, the others.
That passes seven to zero with two absent, and Ms. Pender also voted yes. So, Ms. Hightower?
My apologies. I know in one of these budget adjustments, there was the price, the cost for purchasing the Humble Road property that we negotiated with Guilford County behind Brown Recreation Center to continue expanding that. We already purchased one parcel at $650,000. This is the second piece behind Brown Center that we had been negotiating with the current owner. It has no municipal use, but the city and the county are going to share in this expense, and I believe it's in one of the budget adjustments. I couldn't find it, but I wanted to speak to it, because it will be a completion of land behind Brown Recreation Center that will help to expand the center, expand trails that are currently behind Brown Recreation Center. And that took months of negotiation, but between Mr. City Manager and a county city manager and legal, we were able to come to, I believe, an agreement which will allow this adjustment to move forward to use ARP money. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am, you're correct, Counselwoman.
And once that is done, how soon will that negotiation be finalized?
We're going to put Director Fleishman on the clock on this one.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Pro-Tim and Council. We're currently working through that negotiation. Now that we know that the funds are in place to acquire the property, we are very hopeful that that will be successful, and that, in fact, that offer to purchase may advance to council for approval as soon as next week. And essentially, as Councilmember Hightower mentioned, it's roughly an eight-acre tract that does connect the property that the city acquired last year on Elm Eugene Street towards Brown Recreation Center. So it's something that we've had in the works for quite a while, and we're really eager to bring this forward. And of course, expansion of parkland in the southeast area of Greensboro and specifically around Brown Recreation Center has been lifted up in several plans, including the South Greensboro Area Plan that's been worked on.
Thank you for your work on getting this done and working with the county. It was a unique situation, you know, that we ran into, but I think it shows how the city and the county can work together as well, because it'll be a benefit for all citizens in that area and beyond as well. So thank you for doing good work.
Thank you, and as you all know from the last meeting, a future aspect of this will be developing a master plan for the whole parkland parcel there, so we can plan for the future. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the additional information. That's very helpful. Let's see, moving on, there are no items for consideration on our public hearing agenda, so we will move on to the general business agenda. And we have already continued item I-1, which is the Minimum Housing Standards Commission. So item I-2, resolution approving a contract in the amount of $2,209,833.60 with Blue Arbor Incorporated to provide temporary labor services.
Moving on.
That is moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mr. Holston. We shall do a vote, please. Ms. Pender?
Yes.
Thank you. And that carries seven to zero. Thank you all very much. That is the end of our agenda for this evening. So I don't know if anyone has any, I will just ask if anyone has any boards and commission appointments, or if you are, no? Anyone? No? All right.
I do.
Okay, Ms. Pender?
Sorry. I have Jeremy Simpson for the Board of Adjustments.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, what was the name? It was a little hard to hear.
Jeremy Simpson.
Jeremy Simpson, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that is to be appointed to the Board of Adjustment. Moving on to council comments. I'll start at the very end, Mrs. Hightower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro-Tim. Congratulations on being our new mayor.
Thank you.
And to all council members who were re-elected, and to the upcoming new council members. I wanted to, and I'll save my comments as far as our next-to-last meeting, I believe, but it has been an honor to serve for 12 years to have helped move this district forward, and I look forward to continuing to do that. So while I may not be in this seat, I am not out of this community, and so I will not be going anywhere at all. I will continue to be the community advocate I've been for 30 years in this community to help move us forward and to continue working on the foundation that we established for work that needs to happen in this community: housing and other areas of economic development, and looking forward to our transit, how we're going to do the next cross-town route, micro transit, which will be able to move people to jobs in the outer perimeter of the city. So I'm looking forward to continuing that work as well. One thing I would like to, and I think you explored, I do want to ask about the status of the lights with the arrows that flash, and we talked about those that flash at Random and Meterview, and these are processes that are long in making, but we're almost there. So it will probably happen in the next couple weeks, 30 days, and talking to the state DOT as well. So I wanted us to kind of make sure that stays in the forefront of getting that done. It is a longtime request. But again, the partnership and the relationship with the state DOT is going to allow that to be completed. So if you can make sure you follow up on the status of that, if you will. That was the two lights, as well as the light request at Glendale and Oliver Drive. That's one that's been in the request as well. I also would like to just make sure we continue to push the effort with the sidewalk project on Vandelia. It's currently being held up by federal government because we're waiting on the COVID design approval, so I would like for you to follow up on that as well, because that has been in the making for quite a while. We didn't do it, we didn't delay it, but we have to adhere to the rules. So when the rules change, we have to abide by those rules to make sure it gets done. So I would appreciate some follow-up on that, because the community has been waiting for a while. I don't disagree. But again, some things are just out of your control, no matter what. But I think we can, we found a creative way to do some of this, and so hopefully, we'll be able to follow through on that as well. And we haven't really had anything going on lately, if you have, I haven't been, because it's been quite a busy time. But I do thank staff for all the hard work you do and have done to help make this city great, and it is a great city. Nobody's perfect, nothing is perfect. Only Jesus was perfect. And so we will continue to make mistakes sometimes, but I know that your efforts to strive to do better, they're honest, they're sincere, and they're genuine. And so I have enjoyed the journey with you and look forward to more. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro-Tim. A couple of things, you know, about the election. You know, we were talking about the voting percentages from the primary, which were, I think, 10 and 1/2 percent. Things got a little bit better for the general, and that's good. It's just that I believe still about 20% of our eligible voters chose for the 100%, and we need to continue to work ways to ensure that as many folks as is possible, 50, 60, 70% show up to our elections. I want to say congratulations to those of us who are returning, and also blessings for those of us who are departing. I want to say, I believe I say, four of the future council members in the room, councilwoman elect, April Parker, councilwoman elect C.C. Crawford, councilwoman elect Crystal Black, and I thought I saw councilman-elect Irving Alling in. Is he, is he not here?
He is here.
Okay, he was here earlier. Looking forward to working with you all. Couple of things. There have been some activities, the NCCJ Citation Award Dinner was excellent just this past week. I know Dudley High School celebrated its Dudley Hall of Fame, Hall of Distinction. Recently, their 13th enshrinement was a wonderful event. I'll say that November is Movember for men's health issues, encouraging screenings for men, promoting well-being, things like prostate cancer, testicular cancer, mental health, skin cancer, and heart health. Gentlemen, you know, we do this every year. We got to take care of ourselves, and a lot of times, we're stubborn, we're hard-headed, we already know the, you know, that we don't want or we don't need, but we need to go ahead and get those screenings, get those exams, so we can be around to be with and to love with our family members. That's very important. Mayor-elect Abuja, congratulations also. Looking forward to your leadership. And just on the last two things, those first resolutions from earlier today for Yvonne Johnson. And you know, the interesting thing about the Yvonne Johnson legacy is that we all have a story we can't tell, right? We have at least one story we can't tell, and if you know, you know. But that's what made Yvonne so special, that she had those real, down-to-earth, just regular conversations with each and every one of us, and each of them was very unique, and that's what makes her so special and why it's such an honor to name the Barbara Park Event Center after her. And then last but not least, the Carolina Cowboys. If you haven't seen professional bull riding, please do, it's the most exciting eight seconds in the arena. Go ahead and have a look at it. They'll be back in September of '26 for the Cowboy Days, and looking forward to that. But in between, watch out for that buckle, and by the way, it is very heavy, very heavy. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro-Tim. Oh, and one more thing. I'm sorry.
I knew it.
Sorry about that.
I was coming up the road.
It was that heavy pause, wasn't it? You know, thanks to the speakers that came out this evening, especially those speaking on the issue of police accountability and transparency, those things are very important and things that we have and will continue to look into and to address, and as items come up, with transparency and with honesty, you know, always thinking of what Yvonne Johnson would do. What would Yvonne do? And just making sure that we are listening, and you make sure that we are listening and understanding, and we may not always agree, but we need to be directionally in the same place, because we all want the very best community for our community. And I'm here for it. Look forward to working with you. Thank you, Zach.
All right, Mr. Matheny?
Hold on. Just a few more seconds. Seconds. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro-Tim and future mayor. Congratulations, and congratulations to all the ones that won. Ms. Parker, good luck, congratulations. I sent you an email, I hope you got it. And quite frankly, I love this city and I love serving, but I love my kids too, so I'm not too upset, Mr. Hicks. I'm sorry, I'm not going to be here for you to pick on, but I know you'll find other ways. But seriously, this is a good job. It's a good thing to put your heart into, and so I know y'all have through the community in many different ways, and I know you'll do it even better when you're sitting up here. To Ms. Johnson, to Yvonne. Go ahead, Sharon. You're good. Not much fazes me. You know, to honor Yvonne is very special to me, because when I first was elected in 2007, literally, she was my Greensboro mama, and just a very special person, and so I was very happy to participate in that. And I appreciate our staff, and I'll say more about that later date. Thank y'all very much.
All right, Mrs. Hoffman?
Thank you. Just one more note about Yvonne. As I said, we're, you know, we're better that she walked among us in this city. She was a woman for all seasons, and she had a wicked sense of humor. And I think that was demonstrated when Lisa said today, she didn't want a street named after her, because she didn't want anybody driving on her. So, you know, that was so typical of the really quite funny things that she would say from time to time. But congratulations to all of the candidates who were elected by the city, citizens of Greensboro last week. Running a campaign is hard. It's just, you grind it out for a number of months. So it's a privilege and an honor and a responsibility to serve this city as a member of council. So again, I thank all of those candidates who put themselves out there last week. Just one note, I'd like to recommend to our citizens in the chamber, but throughout the city tonight, there's an absolutely extraordinary exhibition at the Weatherspoon Art Museum, and it runs through the end of November. It's entitled Fighters for Freedom, and the artist is William Johnson. He grew up in Florence, South Carolina, was born in 1901. He went to, graduated from high school, went to New York, studied for a few years, and then went and lived in Europe in the '30s. And he was quite a significant abstract painter, but he came back to New York just at the beginning of World War II. He thought it would be safer for him, and also he married a woman who was Danish, and so they came back and lived to live in New York City. And in the early '40s, he totally changed his painting, and this is when he, over three to four years, he did this Fighters for Freedom. And it's a tribute, really, to African-American activists and scientists and teachers and performers, and his paintings are very detailed, they're very colorful, and it's a totally different style of painting from what he had done earlier in his life. But it's done in an interactive way. It really makes you think a lot about the meaning of that time and today, and it's quite historical, and I really urge everyone who might have an opportunity to do that, there is no cost to going to the Weatherspoon, it's free and open to our public throughout the city. So I highly recommend seeing this exhibition. It's certainly worth an hour plus of your time. So thanks so much.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that with us. I'm going to ask for Ms. Pender next. Would you like to say a few words?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. I would like to just congratulate everyone that was newly elected to council. I wish you much success. Also, just a couple of updates that I would like to just bring to everyone's attention is, I know recently, there has been a lot going back and forth around those experiencing food in... around those experiencing food insecurity or food hardships, and just want to make sure people are aware of the Guilford County Food Finder app. So you're able to download that app, and if you don't have the, um, ability to download the app, you can definitely go onto the website, which is the Guilford County, um, foodfinder.org, where you're able to find feeding locations, pantries, um, and backpack programs for those individuals that may be experiencing food insecurity and food hardship. Also want to thank the speakers that came this evening and just with their passion and just being courageous to talk about some of the issues that are most pressing here in our city and continue to, um, look at ways in which we can all continue to work together as we address some of these challenges that we, um, have in the city. Also with that, um, last week, had an opportunity to attend the Paint the Greensboro Purple, um, which was presented by Portia Shipman and Stacy King, was, uh, which was focused around domestic violence and the resources that are available in our community to be able to create the awareness, but also link people to resources if they happen to be addressing, uh, if they happen to be dealing with, um, domestic violence. And then also, just the last thing, is happened to attend the United Way Beyond Poverty GSO, um, symposium that they had last week. And one of the things, as we continue to look at how do we have a healthy and equitable community, one of the things that was most alarming from that, what I heard, was that one in five individuals in Guilford County, um, either read at a third grade level or have a reading comprehension. And that directly impacts everyone's overall quality of life. And so if we're looking at making sure that all of our citizens, all of our residents here in the city can have a healthy and equitable community, we need to really look at what are those things that get in the way, that prevent people from being able to have or experience that economic prosperity that some seem to be able to benefit from in the city and some do not. And so, but definitely look at how we can all collect and we come together and continue to work on that. Um, and I'm not sure if Andrea's gonna, um, speak about this, but we do have the white flag that's open this evening, um, due to the weather. So, again, there's shelter for those individuals due to the weather, that those resources all are, are available, that are provided by the city. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mrs. Thorne?
Yes, I was gonna measure, mention the white flag, um, for tonight, but thank you, Jamila, for bringing that up. I also wanted to mention and thank Kevin Gray, who has served for more than a year now as the interim director of Greensboro Downtown Parks Incorporated, and done an amazing job in that role, and really appreciate his efforts. We're very excited that there will be a new, uh, executive director for GDPRI effective December 1st, Jack Garvey. Um, he is a boomerang. He was raised in Greensboro and left for a number of years and is coming back, and we're very excited to have him as the new director of the Downtown Parks. So please, for those that would like to watch for him in the parks, uh, say hello, welcome him to the parks, and I think we'll, he'll be a real asset for the parks. I want to thank him for that. Um, thank you to everyone that came out, vote. Twenty-two, I think, roughly 22%? Twenty, it was over 20% of registered voter, registered voters came out to vote. Um, that's certainly been a high since I have been on council, um, and I'm the highest in a number of years. So I'm glad to see that turnout. I'm glad to see people getting involved and active in our community and passionate about coming out to vote. So thank you for doing that. Um, and I think that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I was gonna also, um, talk about the white flag, you know, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Pender, at First Baptist Church, 1000 West Friendly. Want to make sure that gets out there as much as possible. Um, we kicked off the Safe Streets Initiative today, and it goes through next Sunday with the Rite of Remembrance, where we honor those who have been involved and have lost their lives in bicycle fatalities. Um, we do have one good thing. This past year, we had no bicycle fatalities, so that is absolutely something to cheer about. We've had way too many. We did unfortunately have a lot of traffic fatalities, so we were working on that with Vision Zero. Um, wanted to mention that I was able to attend the North Carolina A&amp;T State University Farm-to-Table Dinner on Friday, October 24th. It was recognizing the anniversary of the Murillo Act, and that is, uh, the, the act that established the agricultural part of the North Carolina A&amp;T State University. And I know that, uh, City Attorney Laura Covage was there. There may have been more staff there, I can't quite recall, but it was a fascinating time. Congresswoman Alma Adams spoke, and it was something to sincerely celebrate because without that act, there would be no North Carolina A&amp;T State University. So it is something to be remembered, honored, and emulated, and, and certainly honored as best we can. Uh, Rosa Falk, who was, uh, in Public Safety Personnel, she retired after, I believe, over 50 years of service to our city. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager? I think it was.
I think it's 45 years.
Forty-five years. She was very close to the 50 mark, but someone who gives that much of herself to our city.
And are you gonna speak to the awards you received, which I thought was.
I will let you do that in a moment when, when I come ask you. Uh, beyond that, I know several of us were at the YMCA banquet at the Four Seasons at the Sheraton, and that was certainly, uh, something to be thankful for. Congratulations to everyone who won their races and to all of the new people coming in. Uh, that, that's great. We're all trying to get one-on-ones with you to kind of bring you up to speed and tell you, uh, you know, what we want, and also, I want to hear what you want to see done in the next several years. So we're trying to schedule all of those, and I know that the city manager is going to do a, a session with everyone as well. So, um, basically, that's all I have. So, Mr. City Manager, would you like to talk about Ms. Falk, and then any other thing that you have?
No, thank you very much. It, it was so heartwarming to see our Secretary of Crime Control and Public Safety travel all the way to Greensboro to provide, uh, Ms. Falk. She has been a staple in the Police Department for 45 years, uh, to have the secretary come and, and present her with the Order of the Longleaf Pine was a tremendous, uh, honor to, to watch and see and the people that came out. Um, other than that, we want to thank you all. Uh, I know we, we'll have some time to spend, but thank you all for the, the kind words. I do want to take a moment to, to thank the staff, um, you know, for the work that they do that is, uh, truly work around the clock to make sure, uh, that things are done that need to be done for this community. Uh, and they do it without a thing, uh, without even asking for it. Thank you. A few weeks ago, we did have an opportunity to have our annual Fall Festival, and I want to give a shout-out to, uh, the PNC team, Jemaya Waterman, Love Jones, and really, Maria Hicksview is able to bring folks together. Uh, it, it just means so much for me, as a city manager, to be able to have all of the staff in one space, and there was no division of, of departments.